Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Doug Dodd, Chairman of the Central County School Board, and at this time, I'm going to call our regular meeting for June of order. Today is Tuesday, June the 12th. The time is 4:01 in the afternoon. We're glad you're here. If you did not get a copy of the June, there's one on the back table. There's also cards back there if you'd like to speak. Fill in these cards out right up here for public comment. We have three different times for public comment, and one of them's at start meeting, one of them's at the end of the regular business meeting, and one of them's at 5:15. So we welcome your comment. Today's opening ceremony or opening is the Honorable Sandy Kells.
I have words from St. John, the 23rd, who was one of our hopes and goals for a long time, so I'll just kind of add something for our teachers and our kids. So, dear Lord, please guide this board and our executive staff to make decisions that will recognize and perpetuate the hopes and dreams of our classroom teachers and our students. Decisions that will recognize and inspire the unfulfilled potential of our teachers and our students, and decisions that will instill and perpetuate the future possibilities of them. We ask that in your name, dear Lord, amen.
Amen.
Pledge.
Please see him pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Kells. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as recommended by superintendent?
I move to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Second. All right, motion by Ms. Powers, second by Mr. Kennedy to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the opposed, motion passes five zero. We have a time now for citizen comments regarding any item on the agenda. Is there any requests for public comment for items on the agenda?
The comment cards that they may not be on the agenda.
Okay, so those that have filled out comment cards, we will either let you address the board at the end of our business meeting or at 5:15, whichever comes first. Very good, we'll move on. And item number three, approve the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Kennedy to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the opposed. All right, motion passes five zero. We're going to have the recognition of our donations now. Ms. Adele.
We had approved a $500 donation to Citrus High School from Frank Webb. Approved the $930 donation to Citrus High School from the fellowship of Christian Baptist. Approved the $1,000 donation to Crystal River High School from Holly and Derek Elbers. Approved the $2,000 donation to Crystal River High School from Edward Greenwood of Silver CBT LLC. Approved the $500 donation to La Canter High School from Lois Young. Approved the $500 donation to La Canter High School from the veterans of downed wars. Approved the $1,011 donation to the Marine Science Station for faculty support, ladies' breakfast class. Approved the $2,000 donation to the Marine Science Station from Kings Bay Rotary Club. Approved the $9,000 donation to Crest from IRR United Social Club. Approved the $1,000 donation to Crest from Rotary Club of Crystal River. Approved the $2,500 donation to Homestead Elementary School from Woodhead of Shabilla Woods. Approved the $2,000 donation to Homestead Elementary School from Nativity Lutheran Church of Wicken, Washington. Approved the $2,000 donation to Innes Primary School in Centwood Bay, Cleveland. Approved the $1,580 grant to Margaret Skinner, first grade instructor from CenturyLink Clark and Williams Foundation. And that is Chairman Dodd and Superintendent and board members, that's a $26,521 donation.
Woo! Very nice, thank you.
God, we noticed that each donation, as much as we usually get, is going to decrease in the amount and more than we need it. It's a quick thrill, thank you.
Yes, thank you, those people, very much for being so generous, we have a generous community. Okay, we're going to move to item number four, education services. Mr. Heber, we did have a table item, and I think we need to have a motion to take that matter from the table to put it back up for discussion.
I move to take the item from the table for the fact of discussion. The Dell purchase.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I do need a second on that, so we are moving to take the matter from the table, and we have a motion, second. Is there any discussion? Do you have to have a vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we have opened that back up, the Dell purchase for computer replacement, Mr. Heber, Dr. Heber, excuse me.
So, we have on the agenda to approve the purchase of the replacement of student computers in our school.
Would there be any objective, any objection from your department if we were to suspend, for the time being, or we'll call it indefinitely, the recommendation of the approval of the replacement so that we can have time to regroup with our other capital dollars?
Would there not be an issue at this time at this point?
If the board then doesn't mind, I would like to move to suspend the approval of the Dell purchases for computer replacement at this time.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy saying by Ms. Kells to suspend the motion at this time indefinitely, and as far as our discussion goes, yes, go ahead, Ms. Bryant.
I know you probably know this, I don't. Is that going to hinder any of our construction?
I'll let you, you all answer.
We have had conversation, Dr. Gaddis and myself have had a conversation, and we feel at this time it's not going to be an issue to continue with the technology that we have enough of.
And I just want to thank Ms. Androwski, Dr. Gettys, Mr. Heber, for working collectively to come to this conclusion. They've seeked, they've seeked the input at every level, and I think that probably the next agenda item is why I very much can support this, so, thank you.
And we're saying this because we know that we have monies that we're going to need, right, so that we're pleased that it's on the table.
We should have to prioritize.
Right, until we know what that amount of money is, I mean, obviously, we don't know what we're going to need yet for those, your capital expenditure due to school safety, but I think it's a prudent and wise decision for us to make at this time to hold off on this purchase.
And again, because we are not going to negatively impact construction, that, I think, is to me where the comfort level I have with that. If I thought we were, then I would have an issue.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the opposed. All right, motion passes five zero, thank you. Our next item is yours as well.
The next item we have is we are asking for correction from the board, and I'm going to ask Ms. Androwski to come up and present. We are looking at our iPads, as you know, in the upcoming year, we're planning to add 12th graders to having iPads, and so we want to share with you some options that we have as far as replacement of iPads and adding the iPads to our senior class or students that are 12th grade. And we'd like Ms. Androwski to share that with...
Okay, so we would like to propose a few different options on iPads and collect your feedback on that and get some direction. We have a couple of major needs in regards to iPads. The 12th grade, as you know, do not have iPads, so currently 9th through 11th at the high school level have iPads, and we feel that it's important to continue movement and purchase iPads for the 12th grades so that all classrooms have a device. Currently, a teacher will have a class with only a portion of her students with a device, and that makes moving forward a little bit tricky for them. Another issue we have is that the iPads purchased in the 2013-14 school year do not currently support the operating system 11.1. This has some problems, one being that classroom manager requires 11.3, and classroom manager is an intriguing utility tool for the teachers because it allows them to lock down the iPad, control what the students are seeing, issue assignments, see what the students doing on the iPad, and many other pretty neat tasks that the teachers are excited about. In addition, some of our new textbook features are not working on the older iPads because they need the newer iOS. This was the five-year capital plan that you guys have previously seen submitted by Dr. Gettys in regards to iPad replacement. So option number one would be to add 12th grade iPads only, and you could see that that would be approximately 1,100 iPads plus the cases at a price of $367,400. The second option would be to add the 12th grade iPads but also replace all of the iPads purchased in 2013 and 14. Those iPads are used by students and staff members. I know that quite regularly, we hear from teachers that are finding apps are no longer working on the older devices, or as I mentioned, textbook features. So there's the breakdown of the expense to replace those iPads for a total of $885,100.
We're replacing them, but we're not getting rid of them? Will we still have those iPads?
Would we be replaced, we would replace the 2013-14 iPads.
At all levels?
Yes, at any level that has those.
Any level that needs replacing.
Yes, so that's across from third or fourth grade on, fourth grade through 11th grade, plus the teachers at the various levels, elementary men on high that have an older device.
But my first question is, are you still going to have...
Are we trading them in or are we going to keep the old iPads?
Currently, we have no plans to trade those in at the time. We would, we would store those and figure out what the next step would be on those. I do not believe we have an option for buyback at this time, but that's certainly something we could entertain. Option three would be an Apple lease agreement to replace all of the iPads. That's 11,360 devices. So what that would do for us is that would put all of the devices in the hands of the students, elementary men on high, the same, and the teachers, the same device. So it would be the newest iPad, the sixth generation, and this would come as a lease, so what Apple would do with us is they work with us, and we would break the expense of the purchase into three years. So each year it would cost $1,267,847. At the end of the three years, the iPads would belong to us, or we could trade them in, sell them back to iPad, or even to Apple, and get new iPads and continue a lease agreement that we would negotiate at that time. This, this fee would include the new cases, a 360 case, that's very protective of the device and has pretty good reviews, excellent reviews, actually, because you know, that is one concern, we need a case that protects the device from damage. It would also include professional services to help set up all of the devices and Apple Care OS support. So when the techs have an issue with an iPad, they can call Apple and get the tech support that they need to make things work the way it needs to. In addition, the original proposal included some professional development, which we were all definitely in favor. We think it would be very useful for not only our administrators but also our teachers to help give them the tools they need to, to increase in integration of the device in their curriculum, and, but we decided to take it out as a measure to save money. Apple, Ms. Patty came back and said, "Well, we will give you, we believe in it so much, we will give you 18 days of Apple professional learning in the fee for free." So that's pretty, pretty impressive on their, their part, and I think it would help us. Do you have any questions about this option?
Just that, I'm just roughly looking at the five-year capital plan, which includes, I believe, replacement and both, and Ms. Androwski and Dr. Gettys, if you'll clarify, it looked like from 2018 through 2022, there was about $4.5 million that was being shown in the five-year capital.
I'm going to skip down onto that.
And it looks like this lease-to-own purchase would be about $3.8 million.
Right, correct, all of the iPads that we currently have, they would buy from us and would, we would save money, that would take off, it off the cost.
So just, that's what I was just saying, I was just looking at, if we follow a replacement plan as we've laid out in our current proposal, it's about four, four and a half million, this is about $3.8 million. At this point, they're about numbers, is that, am I correct in that understanding?
Correct. So option number four would be to make no purchases at this time. At the high school level, 9th through 11th would have the device, 12th grade wouldn't. Students and teachers, some of them would have the older devices, which, as I pointed out, we have issues with compatibility with various apps and textbooks.
Ms. Androwski, referring to option four, is, is this learning device a major tool of instruction in the classroom?
Okay, so this year in the science adoption, there were various tools that the teachers actually looked for, one on the rubric, one of the elements that they held as important was the integration with the textbook materials with the iPad and the digital components. And so some textbooks actually, the textbook is entirely digital. We have the social studies, social studies textbook that is at the high school level that relies on a device, and then we also have one at the, in the science area at the high school that relies on a device. And then in addition to that, there are numerous features that are on top of the print version of the textbook that helps the student and the teacher. That's just one element. More and more teachers are finding tools that they can use to collect formative assessment data. In the moment of teaching, they can adjust what they're doing because they can determine that students are not with them, they're not, you know, they're not understanding the material presented, and it just speeds that up. Yes, you can do that with paper, but I think more and more teachers are realizing how valuable that is. They're also creating opportunities for students to dig deep in the learning instead of just regurgitating it, they're actually creating and synthesizing. So I would say for sure that we have pockets of teachers that use it every day and integrate it as part of their curriculum. Do we have room to grow? Yes. At the high school level, I feel confident that if we have iPads in 9th through 12th, it will facilitate that growth, and we will do everything we can to make sure that happens sooner than later.
What determines the importance of its use? Are we using state standards to determine that usage?
Yes.
Because it's, that's my understanding, is that this is all based in state standard requirements for post-secondary learning and career.
Right, college and career readiness, there's digital literacy standards that need to be addressed, K through 12, we have digital literacy standards, and, you know, to, to compete in the global market, these students need to understand how to use technology creatively to collaborate and to synthesize their learning. And I, I think that we, as a district, are pretty impressive because we've been ahead of the curve ball when it comes to doing this for our students and our teachers, and I am anxious to see us continue this path and, and be trendsetters.
The other point too, and I know Tom's, he's working his way to that, is that we've also spent dollars purchasing programs that have to be used on these iPads in a classroom. There's Study Island, things like that.
Yes, Study Island, accessibility.
If they don't have these, then, you know, we're, we're...
We just per, we just approved.
Yeah, we just, we just approved about this much money, just in programs that have to be facilitated with this, and this, and this is just a machine, has nothing to do with the output, it's, it's what goes in, the machine comes out of the machine, but it's the programs that we buy that, but we have to make them accessible to the, to the teachers and the kids, and this is just a machine.
You're absolutely right, Ms. Kells, and I know this summer, we have some elementary students that have been participating in, in summer camps, and they've been relying upon the iPads to use the tools such as Study Island. At the high school level, we have some high school students that have been attending school to earn credit recovery, and the iPad allows them to continue working on those credits in the evening, on the weekends, not just during the school day.
Does the 11,360 devices include the third grade?
No.
Dr. Gaddis says no.
And that's, that, that surprised me when I started this thing, that we didn't do anything with the third grade because that's the testing grade. I know we force 12 by our kids, but, but I, I think if we're going to do it, then we need to do it at least third through, and maybe if the 12th graders don't need it because they have their own device, talk to the senior teachers and see if we can cut them up, but I think the third grade often included it in anything we do.
I, I can support that, that third grade would definitely be a viable place to have that. I would caution that when you consider whether to, to fund 12th grade or not, remember that when a teacher has, you know, 25 students in the room.
But I like the, the, the teacher communication with the student through that iPad program that we purchased for them.
Correct.
One of the things that I don't think it's any surprise to this audience and this, in this group, is I can't stand state assessments. So I, I just believe they're being wrongly used, so, and I'm sure you'll hear me say this a little more in a little bit, but that aside, it is what it is, we have to do it. Third grade, they've actually taken away CBT or computer-based testing as a mandate. They have not taken that away from, from the upper grades, and in fact, we're finding that there is more that's being added at the ACT level, at the SAT level, we're looking towards that it's going to be computer-based testing. One of the challenges, and one of the reasons why I was comfortable delaying or suspending the Dell purchase is the potential that we have said if we could ever get the one-to-ones to be an assessment tool, that we could have it do double duty. In the past, we couldn't do that because the requirements say we couldn't lock down that one-to-one device without taking it back, which was just logistically not an option because we didn't need to take that out of the student's hands and then the teacher not have it as a teaching tool. Has that changed, Ms. Androwski? Are you aware that, like, for example, could we use the iPads for assessments or, you know, is there technology now that with the iPads that allows us to? Because it doesn't look like many others that you can.
I would be hesitant to answer that without having more time meeting with Apple and representatives at the state, but that's definitely something that we will look further into. I just don't want to tell you, and based on somebody's word, I want to see it firsthand.
Because I have seen it, and I have seen it, and it works. It's one of the only devices that I've found that it actually does work with the exception of a traditional PC. And Dr. Gettys has seen that operation where the student actually goes in, puts it in the test mode, locks the system down. That potential, both from an assessment, a county assessment, as well as the potential of a state or national assessment, would be dramatic game changer for us too. So I think that we already know we have some of our technology people that are looking into this, and I know that we've talked about piloting it in some, you know, very specific situations, but that gives me some encouragement because this has been the only assessment tool that I've seen that, that we could take a one-to-one device and do that. So I encourage.
All right, I've got a question for you. On option three, on the lease to replace all iPads, and you said there was an allocation for the trade, I mean, we have, we'll have over 10,000 devices we've already purchased, isn't that correct?
Correct, right, and the...
Yes, and so the numbers that we have received on the trade value of our existing inventory with the lease, upwards of $800,000. So that would, you know, reduce the cost of the overall lease by that much.
Doesn't that seem relatively low though, considering some of these are new?
Well, the thing is, the devices that were purchased like last year, we're not going to trade those in because they have more years of life, but going back 13-14, those devices...
But option three is for all iPads, it says. Option three is the lease to replace all iPads.
Not, well, all iPads within a certain age range. Why would we replace a, a new iPad that we just purchased?
I think it's the way that it, it looks in the slide. I think it may be misleading from the slide, because I, I see what Mr. Dodd's saying.
But, but, to address a couple of things, on third grade, the reason we had that in our plan, we couldn't afford it, so, so kind of push that, push that back. You're not asking my opinion because I'm a very, very short timer, but, you know, my, here's, here's the reality, as Ms. Androwski has mentioned, we've got devices that we started purchasing, purchasing in 13-14, right? So if we just add to 12th grade and replace those older devices, next year, we're going to have another batch of devices to replace, the following year, we're going to have another batch of devices to replace, and you're still got multiple levels of devices out there in terms of age and functionality. So it seems like a big, a big number, 1.2 million for the lease option, but if you'll observe, that is kind of what we forecast as part of our five-year plan anyway. Now, we all know that requesting something in the capital budget is not a guarantee in any way, shape, or form, it's a request. So that's, that's the, what we're bringing to, to you today, we don't know what you can afford. If you, if you think you could have, seriously, yeah, if you think you could afford the 1.2 million like we had in our original capital plan, I would say without question, the lease option seems to make, make the most sense because it's going to get everybody on the same page except for the newest iPad, Mr. Dodd. And I think that with the addition of that number, 11,360, plus the ones we purchased last year, it is going to give her, give us a little broader ability to address maybe three years.
So this is, this is at least for three years, so I was kind of going with, with Mr. Dodd, that I thought it was going to be everything, you know, across the board for three years replaced. So the 1.2 covers not...
Oh, everything but the, the five year, the ones you just purchased last year, and I don't know if I did...
How many was that?
Probably roughly 1,200, I would say.
So what would the lease, when, if those are obsolete two years from now and we're in a three-year lease, what do we do with those 1,200?
They won't be obsolete for probably four years.
Okay, so they'll hold. So just, if we, have you got an idea of where we're going three years down the road?
Well, yes, this five-year plan...
If we do another 1,200 iPads, what, what's that going to be if we're on a lease basis instead of a purchase basis?
If you're on a lease basis, you would not have to replace that smaller quantity probably for another four years, you know. It just went into place this year, so...
So we lease these iPads for a term of three years?
Correct.
And then we turn those all back in and we get another...
Well, then you need to decide what to do at the end of that three years. They have, you can either renew the lease if you can afford that, get new devices, those, that's one option. The other option is, I don't know, is it a dollar, a dollar buyout, and you keep those devices at the end of three years, so...
Here's a big question. We also have a long list of iPad lost, can't be shared support made, iPad broken, can't be repaired, and so we've been replacing those. What do we do with the leased machines? What's our, our terms of agreement if a lost or stolen or broken pad is gone?
Well, I haven't asked the question specifically, I'm assuming we would have to pay for it. You know, we would be responsible for that device if we can't turn it back into them at the end of the lease, so that would be a cost with the ministry.
Okay.
Which you do have in your budget, the cost of repairs of the iPads. Trouble is, the fourth-generation iPads that you have have a substantial increase in cost repair than actually the newer ones, I recall, is that correct?
Well, some of the iPad Air 2s because of the screen technology, really not, honestly not worth repairing them at two... not worth repairing them at $200 plus a piece.
Dr. Gettys, I want to go back to the question that Ms. Price just asked before information. I know that we've got buybacks on the lease. Is there a reason why Apple won't give us buybacks if we work option two?
I haven't asked Apple that question, but I do know there are other entities out there. In fact, you probably use a third-party entity anyway, don't you? So there are, the answer is that, that could be a possibility. Again, there are third-party entities that purchase those based on the value, they have a schedule of new terms.
Is that what Apple does with the lease one, lease option, third-party?
What do you do at the end of that lease?
At the end of that lease, we work with our third-party remarketers. So we provide you with that.
You can come on up to the podium if you would, ma'am. It's state made.
Hi, I'm Patty Vogel. I'm a K-12 accounting executive for Apple. So your question was, can you just restate that for me so I can, sure.
Oh, Mrs. Noah asked a question as far as.
Ms. Ryan had brought up earlier about on the option two about buybacks.
Yes.
And the answer was, you won't want to do a buyback for option two, however, but you were doing them on lease for the same machine. So my question is, why would you do it on the lease and not?
We could, we could do it for any options. That was just the option that we had worked together on specifically.
So what is the value of a 2013, 2014 iPad? Do you know?
I don't know offhand. So we work with several different third-party companies. What we do is we facilitate that process so that you, you can get variable prices. So you compare them and then you decide which vendor you feel is best to provide that buyback to you. So I provide you with those contacts. And when these companies, they're, we call them remarketers, they'll come, actually come to the district and they help, they collect the devices, they inspect the devices to make sure they're in order and grade them so, to a certain degree, and then they provide you with the whole based on that.
And so the iPad that we are purchasing in option two is the same iPad that is in option three for a lease, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. And what is the retail value of that iPad?
The retail value is $329.
And the price here is $294. And it's 300, 300 and what, 12?
$29 is the retail value.
To the question.
How do you say people find these items that even though they're long for half, what do they do with it? Who have you a problem with that program that you put on it?
Yes. So they, they resell to third-party markets. They don't sell back to education. Most, most do not, so I can't. Most do not. But they, there's a, there's a market out there for used iPads and they provide vehicles to people.
The overseas market and things.
There's no overseas market.
They can't use the materials, the programs, so it has to be overseas.
Yeah, so there's other, other people or organizations that, that work, you know, they need to sort of complement the life that.
And I, and I think this board knows, because we've talked about this, when you're talking about surplus selling inventory like that, in order to meet further requirements, the way they have to be wiped, the way they have to be tested, retested, there's a process that that has to go through, has to be certified by someone before. And all of that is an expense against the actual item. It's not like we're just buying it on eBay or that somebody is being able to just sell a bunch of, you know, items back off of eBay. So Dr. Gettys has talked about that for us in the past. That's always a challenge because anytime with these types of things, there is a lost value to them. Technology is one of those. We just kind of, it is a necessary evil that we've had when it comes to that. One of the things though that I do say is that when comparing the option two and three is, is one looks like it's a lesser amount today, but if I look at the five-year plan or I look at the next three, four years, it's actually much more expensive if we look at, I think, the purchasing than if we were looking at the lease-back program. So I do think we have to be cognizant to say, what we may get a shortfall today, we may be costing us before. That's why we've looked at these in the past or we've looked at Dell. I mean, the last time I think we did a Dell purchase, Dr. Gettys, we did a similar type situation where we, I see Ms. Tammy saying yes. And, and Ms. Tammy, am I correct, since I saw your nod, from your perspective, having a guaranteed, knowing where we're going over a next period of years is a lot better for you to be able to plan for than the up and down situation? So, I mean, that would be why I would be focused on option three. It's not going away, folks.
I didn't focus on option two because we just said that we would replace the 2013 and 14 with the lease option on three. So why would we replace them on option two?
Miscommunicated. We are replacing all of our iPads under option three, except those that were purchased last year. One of the things that may be confusing that we've assumed, that should be assumed, we've got probably 12,500 to 12,800 iPads in our district, in our, in our mobile device management system, where this was like 11,360. So there's roughly 1,200, 1,400 out there that we just purchased that we don't feel the need to dispose of at this point simply because they have value and they will continue to have value.
Dr. Gettys, the ones that we have in, that we just purchased, if I recall, they're going to be basically the same model or largely speaking, the same model as the lease program.
I believe what we purchased 17, 18, were fifth, what's called fifth generation. What we're purchasing are sixth generation. So there's a very minor.
But the lit, but the difference, if I recall, is pretty nominal between the two. The reason I say that is right now, I can, I think we have four to five different versions of iPads. We've talked before about having multiple types of devices is a management nightmare for your staff. That's already overworked and, and because of the amount of devices that they're managing. Would this not improve some of that by having a standardized device that then would be across the board? Because I know when we did that with Dell, we had at one time Windows 95, Windows 98 machines, 2,000 machines going to a single same operating system was a tremendous change for our district and your staff and the time and money that it costs. Is that still the case?
Yeah, without question. Standardization is better for us because of the small support teams we have to support all of this, this infrastructure. So yes, that's a valid point.
All right, I've got a couple of questions.
I have a question too.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Price.
Thanks. First of all, it's to replace all iPads. That messes me up, okay? Because you got some.
I apologize. And I will take responsibility for that, not Ms. Androsky, because I worry about.
So the ones that we already have, that you bought last year, are they as good as, the same as the ones that we're going to be getting if we go to option three?
Yes.
Everything will mesh with them? Will it have any?
Right. Let me just rewind the tape just a little bit. What's driving this is digital content, digital curriculum. That's the driver. That's the only reason we're going through all this pain and suffering, you know, is that. So as was observed, Ms. Androsky mentioned it in her presentation, and I was sitting there firsthand, saw it with my own eyes, we had publishers coming in doing training on the new curriculum that we've adopted. And I saw teachers sitting there going, I can't do that. Well, the reason they couldn't do a certain feature that's available on the software product because of the version of the iPad they were using, it didn't support the latest operating system which was required for this feature. So that is an important factor.
Very important. That followed you and you walked me through certain things and you'd say like, well, look at the list in the upper right-hand corner. And I say back to you, there is no. It has to be the same or you really, really can't do it.
But to address those devices that were purchased, 17, 18, just purchased, they have another, a value of probably another four years at least, so, and they do have the functionality for the foreseeable future. So I don't think we would need to worry about those devices until the next lease cycle.
All right, I've got a couple of questions now. I'm a little surprised that Apple is only going to give us a 10% discount. What is that? I mean, that seems like a very, very small amount for the amount of business that we give you. And then when I look at the lease option, what is the interest rate? Because we're paying over $400,000 more than the value of those devices over three years. So, you know, can you explain that a little bit, please?
So interest rate is zero. So there is a 0%, sorry, 0% interest rate.
So if I take, if I take 11,360 devices and multiply them by your price of $294.
There's, there's cases also, it's part of the package. I don't have the whole piece of it for me. Right, so we, we have a special price on cases that we've included. We also included services that we've discounted 50%. And then we included the professional learning at 100% discount.
So the, there is a cost for the professional services. There is a price for the professional service.
There is a price and it's discounted 50%.
Okay. And so on the purchase, can, the 10%, if we were to purchase, you were going to answer that was my first question.
Can you just restate that for me?
Okay, that, I was surprised that there was only a 10% discount off retail and you were going to answer that question.
Yes, so that is our education standard pricing. I, I don't have any other power to discount that under the 294. So what we did was we took the total package and what we could discount and provide to you, we did.
Where is the break point? That's where you get the next discount.
There, there is none. There's an education price discount across the country. I mean, it's 294. We don't have, we provide this unit at a very low price points to education. This is a, an iPad that we feel provides the power for teaching and learning and we have the lowest price for education.
But again, there's a bigger discount for Black Friday on iPads, let's see, published.
I, I can't speak to that, sir.
I don't, I don't know, Mr. Dodd, that that's actually accurate. Because I, I can tell you, I've purchased them on Black Friday numerous times. Apple's known, right or wrong, their model has always been, if you buy any phone or iPad with them, they don't discount the price. What you'll occasionally see on a Black Friday is they'll try, is some retailers will try and give you a card to their store.
Or the old model.
Or, or it was an old model, but they are not, that's been their model from day one. They don't do sales other than with they are related. There is no sales from Friday sales to Saturday sales. Is that correct? I mean, that's been, that I know of their marketing from day one. People can argue that they don't like that. I know Mr. Blocker had difficulty often swallowing that. That's just that particular organization's always been the way they have been. For the last of my term, for at least 20 years that I've dealt with Apple, that's been their case.
Well, I got a pretty good deal on my daughter's MacBook Pro on Black Friday that was less than retail and also the.
PCs are different than iPads.
So.
PCs are different.
It's still kind of surprising that that's.
We, we actually, we lowered the price of that iPad specifically for education. So at, when we first announced, if you look historically, it was, it was priced at $499 and we had a lot of pressure because we felt that this was a very important tool for education. So we were able to move that price down. So we have the same power of that $499 unit has now moved down. And then we even took that lower for the education market because we feel so strongly that it can really do a lot for teaching and learning and that's moved down to 294. $499, originally back years ago, if you look at when we first announced.
All right, more members, there's more questions.
But I think, bring up what Mr. Dodd said, I think it is fair for the board to know that in a lease, and I'm not opposed to leases, it is costing you $439,000 for three years for your professional services. Correct? And the eighteen days of professional development.
But it's cases, so there's cases.
I bet the cases in there.
Cases, yes, so there's cases and professional services.
Right. George Trevin, professional.
I'm sorry?
I've already said, correct, the cases out of there. It's still.
I catch more than three months.
I mean, very important, you know that.
Say that again, Ms. Allen, because I was just going to say, I don't, I'm looking at the numbers, I'm trying to find where you're getting that number.
Yeah, the three-year lease that includes 360 cases. Either option two includes cases or $40 each.
Wait, I think that's the brand, it's more than 360 cases, it's.
11,000.
It's 11,000 cases.
Yeah. That's what I was just going to say.
While we're talking about the numbers, clarify this, on this screen that you got up now, we're looking at the 12th grade, 1,265 devices. And on the option one for 12th grade iPads, we're looking at 1,100 devices.
Yeah, the percentage for replacement grows.
Then we look at a total for 2018, '19 comes one, two, which is close to what the three-year lease is, so is the 12th grade 1,265 devices or the 1,100?
That's the difference.
On the 1,265, that includes 10% for road wreckage.
Oh, that includes the lost and broken and stuff like, okay.
So then the next question I'm going to ask is the lease option. When I did some rough figures on over 10,000 devices that were going to trade, you're talking about $78, $80 a device to trade. Was that, you had those all broken out by the year?
We had, yes, yes. So we had estimates based on the model, they'll have a different trade-in value associated with it, and also the timeframe that the unit is turned in will also have an effect on that price. Because, you know, like the longer the length of time, the older the unit becomes, the less value they have associated with it.
Because we have to realize that not only are we going to be paying 1.267 million a year, we're going to be turning in all of our devices we've already purchased. So we're benefiting from having new devices, but we're losing money in the fact that we've got devices that we've already paid for. So when I'm, when I'm looking at the budget though, when I'm looking at what our costs are going forward, I mean, you know, the 300,000.
Same argument could be made for a 15-year-old bus or a 20-year-old bus. We've already paid for it, but it has no value. So the same, I mean, the fact that you're getting 80, I'm not trying to be argumentative.
No, I think not.
Apologize if I come across that way. To me, the fact you're getting 80 bucks for a five, four, or five-year-old iPad, that's pretty amazing.
But we're not going to train it at two or three or four-year-olds plus. I know, you're going to tell me it's percentage of how useful life, probably.
Yeah, and I guess that's the question, you know, would you consider that used if it has no value to you after four or five years because it doesn't have the functionality?
Right. It is like having a 15-year-old bus. The, the challenge that you have to realize is in a couple of years when we go to replace, those, those devices are going to have even less value than what you're getting today because they will have deteriorated even more. So I understand what you're saying, but that's the other gamble that you have.
Right. And so what we have to, as a board, is weigh out our, you know, unknowns with capital improvements that we're going to have coming forward with school safety, which we still don't know about, with, you know, what's the best option for our students and the best value, you know, that we can get for our money.
Yeah, and I think that's the big question. Can I afford the commitment of $1.2 million for three years from this point forward? So that's a very valid question and light of the unknowns. So, you know, at a minimum, we feel like. So, you know, at a minimum, we feel like 12th graders have to have devices in their hands. We've been disappointed with the levels of utilization at secondary schools.
Yep.
The valid...
Yep, it's a valid argument.
Argument, when you've got mixed classes, some kids have devices, some don't, you know, they've got a point. So at a minimum, you know, we feel like that would be an important thing.
And for me, that is something that I could, I could agree to, the 367,000. But on the other hand, we'd be getting new devices for a lot of students.
Right. For the time, yeah.
But the question's going to be, is next year, what will we have to do? I mean, and I struggle with this, and I'm not, and I'm not, and I'm not on the same page as Mr. Dobbs on it. Because I'm struggling saying, okay, do we gamble? Which is what we're doing. To say, we do the minimum this year, which would say, and I believe the minimum is $885,000, call it. And then see where we're at next year. But I can tell you, if I had to guess, next year, they're going to be coming back to us and saying, okay, well, now we're going to have to look at a three-year plan going forward for three years. I think whether we do it this year or we do it next year, we're going to have to look at a long-term solution to refresh the entire fleet. So we could punt, and, which is what I think we would do by doing $885,000, but I'm not sure that next year we won't be right back here. That's okay. And I truly don't think that's a bad thing because we would have only committed ourselves to the $885 right now, and then the hope would be, we have a better idea of what the capital situation may be for safety. But I don't, and hopefully grants, that we maybe have a platform. I just don't want us to lose sight over the fact that we are going to have to replace that fleet. And I don't think we're going to get away with just saying, well, it's going to get better, because it's not. But I, but I am, I can absolutely support if the board is saying we need to go and try and get away with another year. I think I can support that, but I'm just saying we've got to be cognizant of where we are.
And there will be, there could be some trade-in value on option two that we didn't, we don't have here. Probably around $100,000 is my rough estimate, if we're going to trade in...
I think maybe, yeah. It's, well, you're talking about 1,100 at...
No, 1,500, 50.
1,500.
Yeah, even at $70, it's 108.
Yeah.
And I will say that at their request, when we, they were exploring the cost of lease for us, Ms. Bobo communicated with us, and we, she has a pretty complete listing of our current inventory, including ages, models, and all that. So they came back with, to be honest, I think their number was higher than $800,000, it was probably closer to a million. But in my cynicism and reality check, you know, I'm thinking, ah, that won't be that much, so let's lower it down a little bit. So I think it'll, that's what they based it on, though, a pretty good understanding of what we had.
Mr. Dobbs?
My question about option two, though, if we add 12th grade, replace whatever, whatever, are we still going to have the quality of, what do you call it, functionality? Will we have functionality?
I think what they said, we would be replacing the ones with the operating systems that aren't functioning.
I thought that was the case, yeah.
Right, option two included replacing the 13, 14.
So we'll have total functionality with whatever we have with option two?
For the upcoming year, we would say yes, and then, you know, as new operating systems come out and the demands required by that operating system change, then we could be looking at the 2014, 15 not working to full capacity.
If the board were to agree to option two, but modifying the total agreeable price to at least consider a sellback of some of the items, is it realistic to think, because we have a timeframe that you've got to get these order so that your staff can get them and process them? Is that something that's realistic, that you all could come up with a trade-in value?
You know, some years, the rollout did not occur day one, first day of the school year sometimes, to get everything taken care of.
But that's been a problem.
It was September, right, and it's been a problem. So we, Patty and I had talked about, you know, we want to get these in the hands as soon as possible, and she said, well, give me the date that you want them by, and then we'll work backwards. So that was our plan, once we had some direction from you guys to pick that date certain, and then work backwards to see what we needed to do.
Because taking into consideration, and I think Mr. Dobbs corrected about what he's thinking the savings would be, my leaning, listening to the board, if you all were thinking this, would be to say option two, up to $800,000.
Well, I think up to...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to, I'm saying, up to, meaning that the idea is we...
Right. And then if Apple would be nice, they could throw in professional services assistance, right?
Well, and I would say that that's where we're at, and that could be a conversation, but, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I feel like then we could get through what we, the most critical needs that I think our staff's telling us we have, and then regroup next year.
The only thing I just question is, because it's $100,000, and $100,000 is $100,000, is I know that iPad itself can become obsolete because of applications that make it obsolete. But cases aren't obsolete.
Can they be reused?
Can they be reused on these things?
So the cases depend upon the iPad version. So the size changes in which requires a different iPad, so cover. We have various cases out there depending upon that year that we purchased the iPad and this, kind of like your phone...
Keep changing the dimensions.
It's kind of like your phone, the case changes.
But, but how realistically, what's been the lifespan of that case? Because it's not been as long as the device.
No, it's, unfortunately, two or three years. In fact, we have schools asking, you know, for us to replace the cases for the iPads they have. Now, this sounds kind of gross, but I've actually heard of school personnel using like rubber gloves in these iPads because they're just...
They put it in dishwasher, they clean them.
Yeah, we tried that. Didn't have as positive of results as we had hoped for.
I doubt it, the teacher who touches the computer.
Okay, so I would lean towards, if there's no objection by the board of saying, option two, up to 100, up to $800,000. And I would include that it would be the board's desire to include the services as indicated by professional services, et cetera.
And I would, I really, I know what we're spending every year, and I think we're close on the lease. I'm still thinking that we just have to turn some kind of policy on this lost, broken stuff and that additional cost, and that's in the back of our minds right now, the additional cost. This is going to get in our hands, but we know what we're spending every month on this lost, broken stuff, too. So that's, that's not, that's not in these slides, and it's not going to change.
The problem is legislation is not kept up with the fact that they'll tell us we can definitely replace a book and charge the student for a book, but the digital book, you read, or device that you are required to provide to the student, you can't clearly define how to address that other than criminally, which is an issue.
But I do like your, I do like the lease because it keeps everybody on the same page. They all come in, they all go out. I like the idea that it's a one-stop shop. But I just, we're in such tight constraints right now with money wise, that I'd love to go up through your lease and replace them all, everybody's on the same page, and it sounds really great. But I just don't think we've got the money to do that right now. I really don't.
Okay, do you want to entertain a motion?
Yeah, I made my motion. Option two, up to $800,000.
All right, motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Powers, for option number two on the slide. Up to $800,000, which would include, though, a, I'm assuming that is the trade value.
That's what I, that's why I'm adjusting that price, yeah, to take into consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, wait, we haven't voted yet. Okay, is there any other discussion? Yes, Dr. Getz?
I just want to say, as was mentioned earlier, timing's important. The challenge here is this, we really need to order devices on time, to have them back, get them repaired for our students. So that's number one. Number two, there's going to be a little bit of time involved in getting a solid quote on the buyback and the amount. So there are two different functions, really. One is ordering and paying for the devices. The other is really getting a quote for buyback from a third party, it's not going to be Apple.
Then can we do this?
So there would be time, am I right there?
Can we do it as a two-step, that we are, we crest, then we approve option two as it sits here, but we're asking that part of that is we want a buyback on a price to that? Is that in that? And you're saying that's where they're, you're not trying, you don't want us to delay for the buyback?
Correct. And I think if we go ahead and order, we could even possibly come back to you, well, time against the fact, as I said, maybe we could come back to you with options, but I don't think we're going to have any trouble getting 80, 80,000 to 100,000 buyback on the devices that we're returning. But, but again, it's not a burden of hand, so...
Then if the chairman would indulge me, I would modify mine to accept just option two, but request that that include a buyback of the iPads, of the existing three iPads that option two would replace.
Okay, who's my second on that?
I am.
Okay, so you would back, okay. Do the mid-motion, so that the motion is to approve option two for purchase now with the understanding that there will be a buyback of the 1,550 or the device there here from the 2013, 2014 years.
Yes, sir.
And so that's, yeah, that's a...
You can increase it all, so you can...
Yeah, and I'm including that in that still as well, yeah.
Well, I guess my question would be, is Apple including that?
I have to, look at the big picture, I have to, so these are new numbers for me.
Okay.
So I've got to, I've got to work with my finance team, I've got to, we've got to put the package together for you and see what we can do for you. I cannot commit to that here at this podium until I have other eyes working with me on it. I will give you my word that whatever I can bring forward to you, as I did with the larger proposal, I'm going to do my best to do the same. But I cannot commit to this at this time until we review everything.
Mr. Dobbs, and I hope you understand, we want, we want to be...
And I, I understand.
But we don't have any money.
I understand completely, and we appreciate the business that you've given us these years, and we want to continue to be a good board.
All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Our motion passes five to zero. Okay, next up on the agenda, item number five, school support services.
Good evening. I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Golden Act. And yes, we have hired several teachers, and we have added several more to the white rod for next time.
Make motion to accept that support and personnel information construction is included. That is good news.
All right, we have a motion by, this counts as a second by Ms. Bryant, to accept the instructional and support recommendations as given on the Golden Act. Are there any questions about this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Our motion passes five to zero.
Currently, we have 50 instructional positions posted and 22 support positions posted, but we do have several on the white rod. We did that today, we prepared that today, so we are continuing to hire several every day, which is good news.
Where are they coming from?
All over, different. They are coming from different other counties, they are coming from out of state. But I would say an equal mix of both. We have principals that have gathered the resumes again from Pennsylvania, from our higher recruiting trip, and we had one principal that reached out to Pennsylvania, and they are a very interested person from Pennsylvania, very interested in coming, so it's good news.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is our finance section, Budget Amendment number eight.
Good afternoon. I request approval of Budget Amendment number eight, which is April 2018. The biggest pieces on this is the, we want to get additional flood insurance for Marine Science Station, and the Budget Amendment for the sheriffs, the remainder of this year for the sheriffs' request that was at the March Board meeting.
Board, any questions? I'll entertain a motion then. Approve Budget Amendment number eight, April 2018. All right, motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Kells, to approve Budget Amendment number eight, April 2018. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And I guess you have the next one, are you going to do some informational items for us?
Informational items, you have your cash and investment report showing where our finances stand right now, interest rates. I just got the May bank statements, and all except for Brandon are up over 2% now, so we are earning some healthy interest on our money finally, and so that's a good thing. And then you also had your financial statements that were in there, and in the memorandum, we have the general fund, fund balance is up about 4% from last year. That's 4% of where we were last year, so we're up a little bit. And that's at this moment in time, remember, in May, we do have double payrolls, in June we have double payrolls. So even though the fund balance looks pretty good in April, we have a lot of expenditures in May and June that we do not have the revenue to counteract that. The stack of the tax money comes in December and January, the bulk of the expenses are May and June. So we will be depleting quite a bit of our fund balance before the end of the year.
And you're going to give us projected fund balance in the budget update?
Yes, in the budget update, so now we'll move to that.
And Ms. Wilson, I do want to tell you, five minutes, we are going to go to our, since it's a common time of 5:15, that...
Okay, I can probably do this in five minutes. The first piece of paper I gave you, the fourth calculation came out, actually, I think the ninth of Citrus' graduation when it was framing. And so I did email these to you, but just so you have it here, and our FEFP was reduced by $212,208, the third calculation to the fourth calculation. A lot of that's in our categoricals. DJJ went down, let's see, student transportation went down some, and actually, our state schools went down $256, and ESE went up, that's the main one that went up. And this is based mostly on our April count is why these numbers went down. So the next thing I gave you was the, where we are right now in our budgeting process. We do have another budget push this Thursday from HR, so at the June workshop, I will be coming with a full...
be coming with a full PowerPoint, and we'll have the, you know, the June push in there. We'll have a better idea of where our HR positions is. So the significant things that have happened this year, just to make note of them so far, the negotiated instructional increase is one point six million dollars, that twelve hundred dollars for the teachers for this year coming up. That's one point six million more than we paid, you know, spent this year. The steps are costing us about four hundred and forty-three thousand. The FRS expense is going up about four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Our crossing guard and security, we're looking at anywhere from seventy-five hundred to ten thousand for that piece. That's dependent on how much we use the security games and stuff. Of course, the resource officer contract, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars more this coming year than last year. Our one shining light, the FISBIT bill did decrease about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, so we did have a little savings there. Our revenue changes, we are getting a three point five, three point six almost increase in our state FEFP, but almost two million of that is restricted for school safety, mental health, the various different things. So about two million of our three point five increase is restricted. So we have about one point five unrestricted. Our negotiated twelve hundred dollars for the teachers is one point six, almost one point seven. So right there, we're going into our fund balance. And then we have FRS on top of that, STEPS on top of that. We haven't even discussed support raises or anything, so. Local tax revenue is going up sixty-six thousand dollars for this year, so that's a big whopping chunk of change there.
Sixty...
Sixty-six thousand.
Sixty-six thousand, does that include both capital and local required effort?
That's just our local required effort. That's not our capital.
Okay.
That's just our local required effort with our discretionary point seven four eight.
So...
That's all our general fund increase is sixty-six.
That's my thought.
Yes, sir. Medicaid revenue, we're looking at it will go up. We are moving some positions, psychologists that were funded by IVA. We don't have as much money there, so we'll be moving them to the general fund. Medicaid will help balance some of that out. And then, as you saw, our interest rates are increasing. To be on the conservative side, I would say we will make probably fifty thousand more in interest. It could be much more than that, not too much more, but just to be conservative, we'll say about fifty. So those are our big changes in what we're looking at for next year. And then at the June workshop, we'll come with a full presentation of, you know, all our stats and the bigger picture and where we are after this push on Friday or Thursday.
So our reserve on the self-insurance claims, the protected...
Yes.
...has dropped, so could you explain that?
We looked at that. The reserve is there if we needed to infuse that money into the self-insurance. You know, we had one year, we had two years in a row, we had to give them money. And then this year, they are healthy. They have maintained their actuary necessity, their safe harbor, and so the auditors requested that we reduce that amount.
Okay, so we're reducing it by half million dollars, which is about a half million.
Yes, that we're reserving for the self-insurance, yes. Okay, are there any other questions? Did I make it?
Yes, you did.
Okay, great. Have a good evening.
Sure, that's five fourteen. Just went up five fifteen, very good. All right, thank you very much. All right, it is five fifteen, another time for citizen comments, and we have three cards here, and the first one I'm going to ask to come up is Davis Marie Craig, and she has asked to speak about the Chris Gangler scholarship drive.
She's quite sad to learn.
Okay, thank you.
I really appreciate having this opportunity. It just seems strange because I don't come to your meetings often, and there's always been someone here with us, and it just doesn't seem right, and I've come to pay tribute to our good friend, Chris Gangler, who I know you feel a tremendous loss for his passing, a man known for his loyalty, persistence, and his wonderful, wry sense of humor. And I was particularly sorry not to be able to attend his service as I had family commitments out of state that weekend. On the Tuesday before he passed, I did, however, have an opportunity to, and apparently on one of the better days, visit with Chris, and we spoke about eternal matters, more importantly. And I just have to tell you from my heart that I left there grateful to see him at such peace, and he was fully communicative the day that I was there. When, after that day, when we sit here and talk about all his virtues, I have to say that I just felt this strong need that we needed to, as a community, create a lasting legacy that would be meaningful for future generations to honor his memory. And so the day after that, I visited with Susan Gill, my trusted and good friend, and I said to her, what do you think? She says, what do you mean? And I said, do you think we can do it again? And she says, what? And I said, establish an annual STEPS scholarship, which, for those that may not be familiar with that terminology, it's a scholarship offered through the College of Central Florida for scholarships-taking elementary promising students. And we chose the school where his wife teaches, at Floral City, and Susan and I had done this before. We had done it for Tom Franklin. We had done it for Gary Madoff, and we both sat there and shook our heads and said, yeah, we can do it. And so I set in motion a process. We were actually hoping we might actually have him aware we were doing it, but unfortunately, our next meeting that I would bring it up at wasn't happening until the day after he passed. But when I did present that to the local Republican Party that he had been so active with in many of the same ways that he served you, it was unanimous. The support that day was frankly very gratifying. Forty-two people signed the commitment form that night, and we immediately had a commitment of almost two thousand dollars and also a commitment from a corporate sponsor. So that gave us encouragement to move forward, and so since, and it really hasn't been a lot of time, as we all know, and so we began, these scholarships have a value of four thousand dollars to a student, and that's really a significant amount. Today, it would represent about eighty percent of the cost of a two-year degree at the school, so it's a long way down that road. It takes ten thousand dollars to endow, and that means, as we put it in practical terms, it takes a hundred people at a hundred dollars, and the job's done. So I'm aware that there are other recognitions being discussed, and I think that's equally wonderful and worthwhile. Remembering that this one directs two students from our county going on to seek higher education, we believe that for the things Chris did for us and for you, that it will be beneficial to the school system at large. And he brought us into the technology age. He was our first webmaster. He was the initiator of our first social media platforms, which I didn't even know what that was at the time. So where we are right now, I've told you how much and how far we've gotten, but it doesn't matter who I speak to just in these few days that I've been working on it. And I run into someone who he had videoed the Save Our Waters Student Jeopardy games. Oh, and they wanted to be on board. And then I talked to the gal that ran CASA for so many years, and she says, oh, my gosh, I was in Young Republicans with him. I want to participate. And so that's the response we're getting out there. At this juncture, we're about at forty-five hundred dollars, so it's come a tremendous distance in a short time. So I didn't feel it was proper to go forward without coming to you, his immediate family, I'll call you. And so that's why I've come here tonight, to bring you up to speed with what we're doing. And in speaking with his wife, we set a date for a kickoff, and I'm going to give you each flyer for that, and Miss Himmel and I spoke this afternoon, and I have emailed her an electronic copy of it. So I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you so much. I'm going to bring this topic up during comments of my section, or maybe some of you will too, so we'll do that at that time. And Davis, thank you so much for coming, and we'll kind of go over here in a bit. All right, next up on the public comment is Donna Dillak from Citrus County Building Alliance. She has asked to speak about the Citrus Construction Academy.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is evening now. This is my first school board meeting, and it's been very interesting, quite a pleasure to watch. Thank you. Here today is a representative of the Citrus Construction Academy. The vision for this academy belongs solely to Harold Walker. He's a very passionate man who understands our desperate need for at least two things in this county. One is skilled labor in the construction industry, and the other is options for our students to graduate with less or zero debt and a good living wage that they can make here at home. Our academy committee consists of many representatives from our industry. Some are members, some are non-members, and one is your very own Director of WTC, Gloria Bishop. We are forming a 501(c)(3) to raise funds for scholarships, instructor salaries, or funds to remodel WTC space if that's what's necessary to make this goal happen. The goal is a wildly successful dual enrollment program at WTC that would evolve into a fully enrolled construction and trade classes there, as well as total high school integration on a local high school complex, just like the other nine academies in Citrus County. We have an obvious shortage of skilled trade workers, and we all know that it's not just in Citrus County. Unfortunately, it is a nationwide problem. Together, we can change this and reduce that shortage locally. We believe this academy will truly benefit all parties involved, especially the students, because unfortunately, we also know that not all students are ready to go to college right out of high school. This doesn't mean they'll never go. It just means they're not ready to go now. I personally didn't enter college until I was thirty-eight. I can tell you that if I had gone any earlier, I would not have graduated summa cum laude. I still had a lot of life skills to learn and a lot of self-discipline to learn. My daughter found herself in the same position during her junior year, and that was a really hard pill for me to swallow. I understood, though, that she just wasn't ready to go away to college yet. Seven years later, she is now rethinking what she wants to do with her life, and college is back on the table, and that's because I had the opportunity to show her that it's never too late. I also now have a grandson that I love very much, and I want him to have hands-on exposure to as many trades and skills as possible before he graduates, so that he always has multiple options, no matter what happens. Post-secondary training is not enough. We have to train for the future, and we believe the best place to start is with hands-on opportunities like you and I had in high school, in shop class. We want to help you introduce industrial arts or shop class-type electives into the middle and high school levels. This gives students the opportunities to learn appreciation for building things and working with their hands early, which leads to real interest in opportunities like construction and trade programs at WTC later on. Our kids need options, and we need a skilled workforce. We hope to work with you to make this happen. I've provided a follow-up letter asking for additional information from the board and for additional support. We hope you'll work with us to achieve this vision because we truly believe that the only way that we can build a better future for our community and our children is by working together. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, and next, we have Bobby Linsler. Also, would you say something about Citrus Construction?
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent, Mr. Chairman. This is also my first meeting, so most of you know me, but I just wanted to say I appreciate you having me. I want to echo what Donna said. I'm president of a company that does have an advertising contract with La Cucchi Technical College, but I'm here today before you as a private citizen and a member of that Citrus County Construction Academy. I am what they call a job site liability. I hold the dumb end of a tape measure and have never worked in construction in my life, but I got involved in this because before I started advertising on political campaigns, and before I started advertising for private businesses in general, I was living in Gainesville teaching website code writing, HTML and CSS, to students who had clearly never built something in their lives. And they looked at it, and from their mind, they then used their hands to type on a keyboard that then was something they produced that they could see on the screen and that they could tell other people to go see too. And what I think we could do with the Citrus Construction Academy is to get, I think the iPads in schools is a great idea, and that's a whole other discussion, but for the kids that don't take to that, to give them a chance to build something else with their hands, that they can say, come look at this. This is what I did. This is what I made. And I think that's something, the smile that comes on their face is something I've seen at the collegiate level, something I know we can produce for them at the high school and maybe even at the middle school level. So what I'm here to echo what Donna very eloquently said is just, you've been receptive to us so far, but please, your continued guidance, your continued attention, we appreciate everything you've done for us so far, but we really want to make this dream a reality. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Just can we just talk for a moment? Or can I have one more person? Sean Burdette, from the Citrus Peace Foundation.
Welcome all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to take a moment to talk a little bit about what the foundation is doing in honor of Chris Gangler, to kind of bring everybody up to speed on that. We've had some private donors step up. We will be having scholarships for each of our high schools in the amount of one thousand dollars to honor a student in photography, political science, and talking with the legacy that we have with him within our school system. He's been a phenomenal partner of the foundation and has continued to show us a way that we didn't know possible with technology and bringing in partners and successful pieces. His legacy will live on through the foundation. We also have an additional private donor session that's going on with Marla, and we'll be looking at that revenue and using that to what she feels is the best way to create a legacy within our schools and Chris's honor as well. So we are very honored to be housing that for Marla, for his family, and we are truly grateful for the number of people who've stepped up, want to be a part of that, and want that legacy to continue in the future. So again, I just want to share with you that that's where we are currently. It continues to grow. In fact, today, I had three different donors contact me to increase that value for that scholarship for each of our high schools. So I appreciate you so much. Thank you for letting me share, and again, today is a little lonely without Chris, but we will continue to do our best to honor his legacy in our high schools. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kennedy, you wanted to say something now, or do you want to...
Yeah, if I can just, I wanted to thank the Citrus County Building Alliance for coming today. You may know, you may not know, this has been a huge passion of mine. It is, we call it CTE. It's Career Technical Education. The old world word used to be vocational classes. This is a passion of this board. It has been a huge passion of ours. It's one that we lobby for every year. We lobby at the state level to the point that the challenge we're having is that this past year, we got Representative Missoula for the second time to run pathway-alternative legislation, bipartisan legislation that couldn't make it out of committee. The challenge we're having is that at the high school level, the reason we don't have the courses... And one of the challenges that we had, that we wrote and modified the bill last year, was HV311, is that it provided that the work the students did in school should count towards them achieving, meeting the standards towards graduation with regards to that high states test. Committee wasn't interested in hearing it. We've struggled to even get industry to take notice of this. This is an economic issue, and I know I'm talking to the choir when I say that, but this is. Representative Missoula will tell you, he didn't have people writing letters other than educators saying, "We need to change this," because without this, our students don't have an opportunity, particularly our at-risk students. The very people, the very students we want in those courses are the very students that can't take them if they're not on track to graduate. In 2017, we had, we made, for the last number of years, we had made an alternative pathway towards graduation, so that if our students couldn't pass the states, they used an alternative, that we used an out-of-state program to get them their diploma. 2017, the legislature took it away, penalizes us now for doing that, basically says, "We don't want you doing that. You pass the tests, or you will be held against us." So I say this to you to say, these are the challenges we continue to fight for. I will tell you, I am there in spades with you, because these are the very things, these are my people. This is, this is who I've been. I have been a member of the alliance, of the association before that. I believe in this. My tile maker, my tile layer used to make $100,000 a year. My installers would make, you know, near that. This is a moneymaker, and I would encourage too, that one of the things we need is to get recruiters into our high schools for the program, just like the military recruiters, and I love them, they're wonderful people. But we need those students getting on our, you know, getting you all on our stages with those contractors, saying, "Listen, I will hire you if you can get trained. If you can pull wires, we can hire you next year." And we need them here. I don't have to tell you, if we can get back to 800 to 1,000 permits a year, we can't get, you know, we can't get houses built because we don't have craftsmen to do it. So I just want you to know, we are hearing you, we are on board with you. And with that, I'll stand down. But I'm there.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. We appreciate you all coming in. We have a commitment to our vocational program, and Ms. Bishop does a fine job, and they're always, you know, looking for funding avenues. And of course, sometimes it goes the other way, where we have to cut positions, but, you know, the hope is that there will be funding coming down for trades and trades academy that's in place, and they're very successful.
I have one more.
Yes, you may.
I taught a young man years ago. He was the son of one of our chemistry teachers at his school. His name was Tim Jones, and he was duell enrolled at WTC, and that's when the construction program over there was really, it was full. So don't lose heart, because we're just regenerating something that was very, very successful. Tim made headlines at our school because he was, he entered that state competition and came back with it. So thank God our chronicle is very, very good. So as your, as your kids graduate, we just attended their graduation, shook all their hands, they will generate another 10 for you this time around, and then you'll have 20, and then you'll have 30, and then you'll have 40, and then you'll have to select who you're going to have in your classes. It was very successful. I know with Mark Hammer and you guys and Wayne, it's going to be very successful, and we're willing to do anything that we can afford to do to help you, maybe even integrating some kind of math program. They used to have to do three-dimensional houses, create houses, and with floor fans. I still remember looking at one student, and I said, "You have no doorway to the hallway." And so we can do things, maybe not do an entire shop program, but maybe we can get a math teacher to help you with something that long line, if you give us, just touch base with the curriculum, but we're there with you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Hemel?
I want to do a shout-out, or a shout-out to Bobby. Dr. Bieber just finished his doctoral last month.
March.
In March. He has a license tag, and Bobby finishes his in August, correct?
Yep.
So Scott feels your pain.
But you can get a license tag when you're older.
Okay, very good. We'll keep moving now to the attorney on legal matters. Okay. All right. Item number 10 is to approve the minutes.
Approve.
All right. Motion on Ms. Bryant, say, Ms. Powers, to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you oppose? Okay. We have a, that's, it finishes our business side of the meeting. Will you open up for citizen comments? We've just got out of that, but is there any other citizen comments? Anyone who'd like to approach the Board for comments? Okay. We'll move then to the Board Member Committee Reports at the end of business.
Glad to be home.
Thank you. We're headed down to FSBA in Tampa to be able to learn some more about safe schools and all those sort of things you've been mentioning, looking forward to that.
And I just came back from Austin, Texas, and saw my grand niece graduate. I just did, we did, so I did seven graduations this year, and I, they had fireworks. It was awesome. They didn't start until eight, but it still took them two and a half hours, but everybody was getting up and leaving, and all of a sudden, these fireworks started to come off on the other pages, but it was, it was beautiful. And for those of you from Tallahassee, the entire striping strings outside of Austin, every school, elementary, middle, and high school is scarlet and gold. That's all I saw. Glad to be home, though, late last night.
Getting ready to head down. I have Legislative Committee in the morning, which I will be talking about career and technical education pathways and the importance of it, and getting that already started to be put on our platform for our association, because it will be on our platform. I also will be taking a leadership role in FSBA on Friday, so I'll be, I'll be named as a chair to one of the committees, so I'm excited about that. And with that, the only thing I would say with the Chris Gangler situation, or I should say with our friend, is I would again ask this Board if we can put together a day that we do, where we have Chris Gangler Day. And I just really think we need to bring that forward. I know it's, it's just something that's important to all of us. It's just therapy as well as much of anything. That's it.
All right. Very good. Yes, I wanted to mention too, I think it's a very strong effort in the community for Chris Gangler and memorialize him and what Avis Craig and the group is doing for the STEPS Scholarship is a great way to recognize his work and that would be given to the elementary school students, and I'm going to support that financially. And I appreciate the work of Education Foundation, which will be awarding scholarships at the high school level. And so, Avis, I'm going to try to be here at this kickoff, and I appreciate you all visiting, and all of us. I know Chris meant a lot to all of us on board, as the superintendent, and I know that we want to see these scholarships succeed and be funded. So thank you all for coming. I will talk about two things that I see as being relatively important in the schemes and committees I'm on. One, I wanted to touch on the Florida High School Athletic Association and a vote of the Board that deals with heat-related illnesses. And I want our county to look at this closely, because the FHSAA decided on a new policy dealing with heat acclimatization and dealing with heat-related illness and heat stroke as a result of several young people who have died as a result of heat stroke on football practice field. And so I've spoken a little bit to Mrs. Hemel about it. One of the things that is going to be required is going to be that all head coaches, supplemental coaches, and student athletes are required to annually review a new online educational course dealing with heat-related illnesses and prevention. You know, we have concussion protocols that they take a course on, and they have the sudden cardiac arrest. And so there is an educational component here, because we have to be very much aware of our students, student athletes, who are, especially in the football realm, with the protective equipment, they must wear, which obviously adds to, can add to heat stroke. And so there is a new policy that we just approved today. It also strongly recommends the use of a wet bulb globe thermometer, and it also strongly recommends the use of cold water immersion tubs. And I was very surprised to see in one of the, one of the polls they took of the number of schools, that almost 40% of high schools did not have an immersion tub, a cold water immersion tub. Heat-related illness is preventable. If a child is showing signs of heat stroke, if they can get that child into a cold water immersion tub within the first 10 minutes, their survival rate goes up tremendously by getting them into a cold water immersion tub. So I've been talking with superintendent, I want to make sure that our football programs have that, and I know, I've spoken to several coaches myself, and I feel pretty good about it, but I think it's something that we need to look closely at if we need to formulate a policy, because the FHSAA obviously is strongly recommending this, but we can go a step further to require some things if we so choose. And while they didn't want to get into specific sports, because the Sports Medical Advisory Committee unanimously recommended that the association require this for all sports, and so there were a lot of concerns on how that would be monitored and how we would be able to make sure that, you know, when we're dealing with every sport, you know, where the needs are. I like, I like to look at football at first, because that's where the students have, you know, deal mostly with heat-related illness. But I certainly, I know none of us would ever want a child to die on the practice field of any of our sports, but I want us to look at that closely, because I feel strongly about it. I feel the education component would be there, but if we have to require those cold water immersion tubs, they're inexpensive, it would not be a bad thing to do, it would be a great thing to do even at the middle school level. And as they look at some apps that the coaches use, which may be very, may be a very good tool, not necessarily say they should have a wet bulb globe thermometer, but when I've looked at those devices, they're only, they're around $200, and it measures gradient and ambient temperatures. It's not a hard device to use, you know, we could look at that. And so I might ask the superintendent.
After Mr. Don and I spoke today, I met with Mr. Bishop, because we were going to get a hold of Dave Rollin to work for the high schools, but would you let them know what we're currently doing, please?
Our high schools all have wet bulbs. I was kind of athletic director, we put that in the handbook, yeah, I have the handbook for such kind of schools, for them to have the wet bulb, they're supposed to take the reading, email that to all their coaches, and to their feeder, middle schools as well, to let them know the heat range or heating deck for that day. If it's elevated, they can give them extra water, break, make water readily available, and give them breaks and be comprehensive of that. As far as immersion tubs, I agree. I think immersion tubs are a great way to go. It's relatively expensive. I know at Citrus High School, I was just down there literally yesterday, they have a tub, they bought at Roll King. It's a big, classic, long-type tub that they put a lot of ice in, a lot of water in, and they're actually using it as a recovery tool for some workouts. They're going out doing the exercises, the kids get hot, and they'll have the kids sit in the tub, in the immersion tub, and get out, it helps with recovery, it certainly is a tool to reduce the chance of heat-related illness as well, so I just want to support that as well.
And you're saying that we already have wet bulbs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, yeah, I would like to follow up on that, because I hadn't heard that yet, so...
The high schools have. It's in, actually in our athletic handbook as well, so we're requiring.
And I'm sure they're going to be seeing this policy relatively soon, but there have been some changes on some things that have gone from should to must as far as hydration periods and things like that. So I know they'll be staying up on that, on Policy 41, which is the policy that was just approved, but so...
Yeah, that was taken, was that today?
Yes, it was today.
Yesterday and today?
Yeah, it was today. And the other thing, though, that I will let the Board know that's interesting is that the FHSAA does not regulate summer workouts. So that would be something that we could look at instituting a policy dealing with summer workouts, because it's very hot, and, you know, those are things that we could talk about, so that would be something too that maybe we can, we could look at instead of the policy. And then, yes, I...
I'll just go down on those too, just as, I know I've been a part in most of the recent years of emergency protocol, that I've been grateful that our district, it takes very seriously the ADs, those emergency protocols, and I know the submersion tubs are part of that, that we're supposed to, you know, they look at who's filling them every practice, who's the person, and they actually have that in their plan, in their emergency action plan. The only thing that I would say, and I think you're right about football, and for those who worry that we're just trying to say football's the only one that matters, it's not, is because of the equipment involved, it's a very different, specific, heat-related sport than I think what we're saying, because, for example, the immersion tub is always becomes a bit of a comical conversation in the swimming world, because you don't have it. And so I would say that there is some practicality that has to be applied to some of that, because it's actually in part of our protocols, and we actually kind of go, "Okay, who's filling the pool?" So there is those pieces, and that's why I think it's a smart idea maybe to look at football, because that's the most critical area first.
Right.
And so I'm very supportive of all of those directions.
And this education component is going to, I mean, because cross-country's another one, that is something that a lot of times, the practices are not always during the heat of the day, and the races are in the morning, and so there's a lot of things there, but, and where they race is, you know, you can take the radiant temperature at a football field or a practice field, wherever it is, but across country, of course, is totally different. I mean, when it's, you know, a kilometer down the road, it's going to be different than it is where they start the race, so...
And hydration. You go to...
Hydration, yes.
I cannot say enough how much I'm, I am grateful that FHSA is being proactive, and I think they do recognize that. I am grateful that we have coaches that I've been working with that are drilling into those students, that they've got to stay hydrated, and, but I am surprised, we have to re-educate them every year to say, "You have to go drink."
All of those men come to the church about a hose.
Well, that's exactly it.
The program.
But, Mr. Don, thank you.
With the holes there.
That's exactly it.
They talk through that whole...
Thank you, though, really. I cannot thank you enough.
And then the last thing I have deals with some school safety items, and that is the Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool, which is a part of Senate Bill 7026, which I know we're working towards and we're working on to have that in place and have those assessments done by August 1st. And we've talked about that, and Superintendent is on top of that issue with making sure that those, those concerns are addressed and the process that we're going to go through. But there is money that's allocated for capital improvements, for grants, that's going to be based on the Safe Schools Assessment Tool. And so I think it's important that our community know that that is something that is being handled now, and it's being, it will be done by August 1st. It will be done much prior to the start of school, and we'll be pursuing as much money as we can get from the state to cover capital needs dealing with safety. So I just wanted to make sure that we were prepared. That's my... Okay. Nothing? Okay. Are there any other items that need to come before the Board?
Reach out.
Let me make sure we're up to a adjournment.
PR.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.
Please, um, break up.
The town, your call.